Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, everyone. Okay, once again, for the third time, I'd like to wish everybody a good afternoon and a happy new year as we start off the 2025 year. We'd like to welcome you all to the Washington County Board of Commissioners. We'd like to excuse our fellow Commissioner Gil Oomquist. He has been called away to some other important meetings and wasn't able to be here, so we'd like to excuse him. As we start off today's meeting, we have the honor of having an invocation by Reverend Greg Wright from the West Side Baptist Church and also a member of the local interfaith council, Southern Utah Interfaith Council, leading us in the invocation, after which our pledge of allegiance will be given by cadet Connor Ricks from the Junior ROTC. Thank you so much Reverend for being here.
Father, we thank you for the privilege of living in such a wonderful place. We acknowledge that you've given mankind the responsibility to be good stewards over everything that is in our hand. And in particular, we pray for our county commissioners and those others represented here today to be sworn in in positions of leadership and influence, that you would use them for the benefit of the people in our county, that we would be able to enjoy everything that you have made. So we pray, Lord, that your hand sovereignly would overrule man's wickedness and that you'd use these avenues to bring men about. Thank you for the joy and the privileges that we experience here, and we pray that you would bless us in it. We ask this all in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. As we begin today's meeting, our first item is our consent agenda. The consent agenda is a means of expediting the consideration of routine matters. If a commissioner requests that items be removed from the consent agenda, those items are placed at the beginning of the regular agenda. Other than request to remove items, a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda is not debatable.
Well, Mr. Chairman, and welcome to the chair.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, for this year. I move that we accept the consent agenda as follows. Item A: Consideration of Auditor Approved Claims for Payment for December 18th, 2024 through January 7th, 2025. B: Consideration of Commission Meeting Minutes of December 17th, 2024. C: Consideration of Administrative Adjustments of Real Property. D: Consideration of Administrative Adjustments for Personal Property. And E: Acknowledgement of Adoption of Ordinances Number 2024-1279-0, 2024-1280-0, published on Sunday, December 22nd, 2024. That's my motion.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor of passing the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Well, now we have a very important item of business, and that is the oath of office for some of our county elected officials who just stood for reelection this last year. And, you know, I will turn the time over to you.
I will invite Commissioner CC, Adam Snow, up as well as Gary and David to come up for their oath of office. Tom, our assessor, took his oath of office privately earlier today, and then Brian Sullivan, our clerk of office, will do his office, oath of office when he returns from vacation.
Tell Tom I didn't know that was allowed. Yeah, yeah, David would have signed up for that.
I do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Utah, and that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Hey, gentlemen, we got a question. Were they supposed to raise their hands?
I sustain it.
Hey, I think Lisa has a presentation for you to go stand there.
Thank you. As Republicans that were elected this year as Republicans, we have a Utah Republican Party state platform that we want to give each one of you and remind you and hope that you will use it as you make decisions for our county. Thank you, congratulations, we're really excited that you won your elections.
Our next item is an item that happens every, it's almost like something I look forward to, almost like Christmas, except for different. It happens every year, we will have our open and public meetings training. Devin Snow?
Thanks, Commissioner, I'm glad to hear that you-
Devin, I do want the record to reflect that the open and public meetings training from the Water Conservancy District last night was like seven minutes.
I don't know if I could possibly get this under fifteen minutes, Commissioner, but I'll do my best.
It'll still beat the one that I know Gary Webster from our congressional delegation. There was one at an hour in Richfield that we had to attend once, so as long as it's not that long, it was rough, right Gary?
So I know our commissioners sit through a lot of these, they sit on a lot of public boards, and so they can almost give this training as easily as I could, but we'll get through it. So, as you know, Commissioners, there were some legislative changes this last session, so this is a little bit different than what you may be used to, as I've given these trainings in the past, but we'll start with why we do this. This is, as you said, there's annual training that was required under OPMA. Here's the reason for all of this. It's the intent of the legislature that the public bodies do their deliberations openly and take their actions openly. So that's why training is held, and that's the reason for all the nitpicky requirements we're going to talk about in just a few minutes. Next slide, please. OPMA applies to meetings, and the default rule is that meetings are open to the public unless they are closed properly. So, all the requirements under the Act will apply for having a meeting. So it comes down to a definition. What is a meeting? And this is what's new with the most recent legislation. A meeting is a gathering of a public body with a quorum present that's convened by an individual with authority to convene for the express purpose of acting as a public body to receive public comment about a relevant matter, deliberate about a relevant matter, or take action on a relevant matter. So each of those needs to be present. So, for example, if you don't have a quorum, you aren't having a meeting. So with a commission, that would be two commissioners, and a relevant matter is one that's within the scope of the authority of the county commission. So just to review, this is a definition of meeting. If you're having a meeting under OPMA, then all the requirements of the Act apply. Next slide, please. So, if you're having a meeting, the first requirement is that you have an agenda for the meeting, which we have today. The agenda needs to describe items on the agenda with reasonable specificity. That's important because the commission can't take action on any item that's not on the agenda. The next requirement is that there's prior notice, so our staff here takes care of prior notice of our meetings. Next minutes are taken, and then the recording is made of the meeting as well. So what kinds of meetings are covered by OPMA? In the past, some public bodies have called their meetings a workshop, or a work meeting, or an executive session. Those are all considered meetings if it meets the definition of meetings, and so it doesn't matter really what it's called. If it meets that definition, meaning a gathering of a quorum that's convened to discuss a relevant matter, if it meets that definition, then it's a meeting that's covered by OPMA. Next slide. Exceptions. So there is an exception, and this is also new under recent legislation, so bear with me, and this applies only to county commissions. There's an exception to open requirements for operational and managerial meetings, and so this would cover, for example, staff trainings that the county commissioners are a part of, or that they preside over. And then let's say we had an incident out at the fairgrounds, or something like that. County commissioners could be made aware of that and weigh in on what should happen, what to do, you don't have to give 24-hour notice, things like that. You can respond and deal with that in your operational and managerial role. And then the next is an employee HR issue. Let's say Jimmy is coming to work late every day. How do we deal with this? This isn't a public meeting, this is, you're working in your managerial role to deal with that issue. So that's the operational and managerial exception to OPMA. Next slide, please. Emergency meetings. I don't think we've seen one here at the county, I've seen one at St. George City, this was about a year ago, that's very rare that these come up, but an emergency meeting can be held when, due to unforeseen circumstances, there's a meeting to consider matters of an emergency or urgent nature. And then all that's required then is that you give the best notice that you can about the meeting, and then the topics to be considered in that meeting. Closed meetings. The main thing to remember with closed meetings is that, you know, closed meetings, just for those who are here, closed meeting is when we have a public meeting like this, and then the public is then invited to leave the room while a matter is discussed. The main thing to remember with closed meetings, it's only for specified purposes, so it's to talk about character professional competence, or physical or mental health of an individual, it's a strategy session to talk about litigation, it's to talk about the purchase or sale of real property, and then others that are allowed by statute. So you can have a closed meeting, but only to talk about specified purposes under the statute. Next slide. A quorum must be present, this is how to do it. So a quorum must be present, and then it happens within an open meeting that's been properly noticed, and there's a vote to close the meeting. No action is taken during the closed meeting, and then the closed portion is recorded, but minutes are optional, they may be kept. Next slide. Electronic meetings are allowed if a public body has an ordinance that allows for it. So if Washington County has an ordinance in place that allows for electronic meetings, so what that means is some or all of you could attend a meeting electronically if you wanted to. The only requirement is that you have an anchor location where members of the public could attend. Next slide, please. This is also new under the legislation from last year, predetermining public body action is prohibited. What the statute now says, and this is to deal with a situation with one of our sister counties in San Juan, two of the commissioners were kind of having a pre-meeting huddle to talk about how they were going to vote, things like that. This statute was crafted to deal with that situation, and what it says basically is, commissioners can't act together outside a meeting in a concerted and deliberate way to predetermine an action to be taken by the public body at a meeting on a relevant matter. What happens if the county commission or staff, we miss, maybe notice was published 18 hours before a meeting or something like that, we discover it after the fact? What happens is we would cure that by having another properly noticed meeting where that action would be ratified. Next slide. Thank you. I think I was under seven minutes.
I think you did a phenomenal job, I love it, well done. Thanks, excellent training.
Our next item is consideration of ratification of purchase requests, Ray.
Okay. The first one we have here is more of a ratification. The original purchase order was done for $9,576, but after things were delivered and put together and installed and all that, there was a $674 freight charge. So this brought the purchase to over the $10,000 mark that we bring requisitions to for commission meeting. So this became a total of $10,250, so it was thought appropriate to bring it back for final approval. And then the next one is for the CGC, the Children's Justice Center. This is to update the door access points for their video intercom systems and surveillance cameras. This will make it so their old building and their new building will match access. This is a total of $32,054.24. And the final one is for fair advertising. This is for the buddy mail for $22,299. Unless there's any questions.
Nope. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve and ratify the purchase request as presented by Ray.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you, Ray.
Thank you.
Very good. At this time, we're going to open a public hearing for the Community Development Block Grants. Just really quickly, I do have something I need to read here, but the block grant program is administered through our local five-county. Those who might not know what a five-county association of governments is, it's kind of a catch-all for some of these government programs. And so now I'm going to read, because this is-
Do we need to move to go into the public hearing first?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we go into public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor of going into public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
At this time, I'd like to read a very long statement that I've been given. I feel like I'm in a hostage situation, so I can see somebody over five-county was busy. "I hereby open the first public hearing for the CDVG program. This hearing is being called to consider potential projects for which funding may be applied under the 2025 Community Development Block Grant Program. The grant money must be spent on projects benefiting primarily low and moderate income persons. The Five-County Association of Governments, of which Washington County is a member, is expecting to receive approximately $907,000 in this new program year. All eligible activities that can be accomplished under this program are identified in the CDVG Application Guide, and interested persons can review at any time. Eligible activities include examples such as construction of public works and facilities, water and sewer lines, fire stations, acquisitions of real property, provisions of public services such as food banks or homeless shelters, all eligible loan programs for private businesses, which would then hire low-income persons. The program can also pay for housing rehabilitation for low-income homeowners, or for persons owning rental housing for low-income persons. In the past, Washington County has received applications for projects such as ADA improvements and public buildings for $80,000, Enterprise Senior Center for $48,646, Gunlock Special Service District of Water for $150,000, Hurcan Senior Center Mills on Wills Vehicles for A complete list of CDVG projects funded for Washington County can be found on the Five-County website. The county has handed out its capital investment plan as a part of the regional consolidated plan. This list shows which projects the county has identified as being needed in the community. Anyone with questions, comments, or suggestions during the hearing, please come to the podium, identify yourself by name or before speaking." Sorry. The clerk will include your names in this. Sorry. I could have said that in about two minutes. Very professional, sorry. Okay.
Commissioners, thank you for reading that verbatim, that actually is required in order for us to follow this process.
Who requires this? I want to know, is there a code? Because otherwise this would be the last time I read it.
There's a second page there, Commissioner.
I, as the person that used to work at Five-County, and I can just see you typing that up for me, I would just... And Gary knows who I'm talking about.
Well, he appreciates it.
Okay. After all that, I think I should know Maury to come up.
Maury, do you want to come up and get a CDVG grant? No? Mr. Chairman, seeing none, I don't know if you want a motion to close the public hearing.
Yeah.
I would like to move that we close the public hearing, which has been simulated.
We have a motion to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
You're gonna have to get it together. We're gonna have to take a brief recess for Victor to compose himself.
No.
This is gonna be a fun year, apparently. 2025 will be good.
Our next item is consideration of Resolution R-2025-3420, a resolution appointing a member, a board member to the Washington County Tourism Tax Advisory Board.
I don't want to have to go after that, but thank you very much. We are thrilled to recommend Dave Moody to take the Tourism Advisory Board seat that was occupied by Brett Virtus. Brett served his four-year term, and so, as you know, Dave is the owner of Silver Brewery and Craft Kitchen, and we're thrilled to have some more restaurants represented on our Tourism Advisory Board, so this is an exciting day.
Just so everybody knows, Tourism Tax Advisory Board makes recommendations to the county commission on expenditure of tourism dollars, and they have to be from the industry.
They either have to pay into the transient room tax or the TRCC a tax.
They actually have to be a taxpayer.
Which restaurants do qualify.
Very good. Well, I know Dave, and he's very qualified, and he's served on a number of boards, I think he'll be a good addition.
I agree. Then with that, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Resolution R-2025-3420, appointing Dave Moody as a board member to the Washington County Tourism Tax Advisory Board.
Motion's been made, I will second that motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Item six is consideration of Resolution R-2025-3421, a resolution approving a vendor operation agreement for the Southern Utah Shooting Sports Park. And Susie, I'm actually glad you're here, I didn't know you were going to be here, because I kind of wanted to talk about it. So the agreement we have before us is actually a venue agreement for our archery range there. And for anybody who doesn't know, a lot of people don't know, the county has a shooting sports park, it's just down the road from the county fairgrounds, out in Purgatory Flats in Hurcan, and each one of the ranges is run by vendors or clubs, and we have one here with the Red Rock Bowman. It's actually a very good range, however, we have had communication problems, so I'm hoping that you could tell me that it's gonna be resolved.
Yes, they are now under new leadership, so Mike, Mike, Doug, and Gary are the new executive leadership of Red Rock Bowman, so I've had several meetings with them beginning in November. This is just another one-year agreement versus the three-year agreement that the other venues have, because I told them that we needed to see some improvements in communication with them and the county, so they've agreed again for another one year to see how that goes, but they have promised that they would attend meetings and be diligent in paying their fees, which we just got their yearly fee a month ago, so they were kind of past due, so.
And they've done good things, I mean, you know, Huntsman, I think they've still sponsored Huntsman.
They do.
Every year, and I do think they've run a fair amount of youth programs, hopefully they'll continue to do that.
Correct.
And we can't criticize them too much, because they're all volunteers, right? It's not like they're paid employees, but.
Correct.
Very good, well, I'm glad that they've promised to do better.
Yes, so we're hoping that with this one-year agreement that we can get them back on track and maybe in the future provide that three-year agreement like the other venues.
Okay, very good.
Mr. Chairman, as long as we're discussing, just again for the public, it's a phenomenal facility out there, I mean, the Shooting Sports Park is a treasure that I don't think very many people know about, unless you're part of one of these clubs, but it is, if you like to shoot, and a lot of us do, you can shoot everything out there, I mean, from pistol rifle, shotgun, bow, and archery, it's a great place, so.
Trap shooting, clay, yeah, it's great.
People kind of have to recognize that the ranges are run according to sports, right? So obviously, purgatory plays is all about, everything to do with, you know, shotgun shooting, sport of shotgun shooting, archery that we're considering here, we even have cowboy action, and practical, and also, but the public range is red.
Redcliff's Rifle, they're open seven days a week. Right now, their winter hours are 10 to 3, but they're open 363 days a year, they're only closed on Thanksgiving and Christmas, so cool.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Resolution R-2025-3421, approving a venue operator agreement for the Southern Utah Shooting Sports Park.
Motion's been made, I will second that motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes, thank you. Item seven is consideration of Resolution R-2025-3422, resolution approving Washington County to assume St. George City's revenue pledge for Tuacan Center of the Arts. Devin, speak for a minute.
Sure. So back in 2015, Ivan City bonded for Tuacan, so certain improvements and operational costs for Tuacan, and as part of that bond transaction, St. George City was a good team player, they pledged $25,000 a year for 20 years to help pay for those bonds. They have paid, St. George City has paid for 10 years on this, and this resolution would commit county funding to cover the remaining 10 years under that commitment, so $25,000 a year for 10 years.
Well, actually, you know, for me, St. George really stepped up when it was needed 10 years ago. Tuacan was under critical need of kind of some upgrades. Ivan City, St. George City, the county, all kind of came together to help them secure that, and so the county does appreciate, I know Tuacan very much appreciates what they've done, so this is a good thing, I think.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Resolution R-2025-3422, approving Washington County to assume St. George City's revenue pledge for Tuacan Center for the Arts.
A motion's been made, I will second that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Item eight is consideration of Resolution R-2025-3423, a resolution approving a lease for a local congressional office in the Washington County Administration Building. Nicole?
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. Senator John Curtis's office reached out to me and started the conversation about having an interest in leasing space on the third floor, the space that Senator Romney will be vacating and/or has vacated, and so we worked with Devin, our civil lead, and through some negotiations, and came up with a lease that you have attached and that we're recommending. It's for the term of six years, for 72 months.
Very good. Well, I'll never forget, as a youngster, Janine Holt, if some of you might remember Janine, she was kind of a fixture in politics here in Washington County, and just a great lady. She served as Senator Hatch's congressional staffer, and she had a little office over in the old county building, right at the bottom of the stairs, and- Now, she was just a great mentor for anybody kind of involved. And so for me, it's fun to have the congressional staff offices in the county building. I frankly think that's where they belong.
And it's great. We have Gary Webster from Senator Lee's office here with us right now. With a county that's so predominantly owned by the federal government, and almost everything we do touches the federal government in some way, it's great to have our representatives in the same building, and we can literally walk downstairs and say, hey, we've gotten yet another issue with the federal government. What can your bosses do to help us out here? So with that, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Resolution R-2025-3423, approving a lease for a local congressional office in the county administration building.
A motion's been made. I will second that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item nine is consideration of Resolution R-2025-3424, a resolution recognizing and approving of the Washington County Utah 250 Committee, or Community Committee. Devon?
Yes, Commissioner. So this is a resolution that establishes the local planning board. So this is a celebration that's planned on a national level. Next year, as you know, is the 250th anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence. And so there's planning at the national level, there's planning at the state level. So the state organization is called the Utah 250, or excuse me, America 250 Utah. And then, but what this resolution would do would be to formalize the current kind of planning board that we have here locally, and also establish a partnership between our local planning board for the celebration that'll take place here, establish that partnership with the state planning board.
Fantastic. Chairman, I think this is great. It is, this is kind of a housekeeping and cleanup a little bit, but just so the public knows, we are well underway with planning efforts. We are going to have one hell of a birthday party for America here in Washington County starting this year with the fair. Will be our kickoff, which is the 250th anniversary of the Shot Heard Round of the World, Round the World and Paul Revere's Ride. And so we're gonna start with that, and it will then be a 15-month birthday party. This is the group that is generously donating their time and a lot of effort into planning that. These things don't just come together. And so, but I want everybody to know that if you want to know where to go to be a patriot for 15 months, it's Washington County, Utah, because we are gonna be, we are the tip of the spear for having a great birthday party.
Yep. It's gonna start at the county fair. Shot Heard Round the World will be celebrated there, and Susie's excited about that and done a great job. So with that, I would second your motion.
Yeah, well, maybe I should formally actually make a motion, since I failed to do that. I move that we approve Resolution R-2025-3424, a resolution recognizing and approving of the Washington County Utah 250 Community Committee.
Oh, the motion's been made. I will second it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Item 10 is consideration of Resolution R-2025-3425, a resolution appointing a board member to the Hurcan Valley Fire Special Service District Administrative Control Board. And that would be Drew Ellerman with the term expiring on December 31, 2027. And just briefly on this, so the fire board is made up of the municipalities. The county does have one voting member on it, and the cities have requested and put forward Councilman Ellerman's name to replace Clark Fossen. Is that correct, Devon?
Correct.
So that's, it's also kind of a housekeeping item as well.
Yeah, with that, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Resolution R-2025-3425, appointing a board member to the Hurcan Valley Fire Special Service District Administrative Control Board, namely Drew Ellerman, with the term set to expire December 31, 2027.
The motion's been made. I will second that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item 11 is consideration of Resolution R-2025-3426, a resolution opposition to the transfer of additional private land to the U.S. Bureau of Land Management. Devon?
Commissioners, there's an organization called the Wilderness Lands, Wilderness Land Trust, that its mission is to acquire private land and then donate that to the BLM or another federal agency or land manager. And that basically, they want to increase the wilderness land in the United States. This entity has acquired over 700 acres in Washington County. And the trust has indicated or applied and received approval to donate these 700 acres. This is land in northwestern Washington County. They've received initial approval on that application to donate this private land. This land would eventually become a part of the Cougar Canyon and Slaughter Creek Wilderness areas if approved, if the final approval was given. This resolution, I should note, our county resource management plan notes that the county opposes further additions to, just given how much of our county is federally controlled, how little private property there is, the county generally opposes adding new wilderness area. And so this resolution would express opposition to this proposed donation.
And Mr. Chairman, I mean, we've been aware of this land being sold. The reason I support this resolution, which is in opposition, so I support the opposition of this going into wilderness areas, that the 2009 Lands Bill, Omnibus Public Lands Management Act, or OPMMA, was a huge trade-off in a lot of ways, as you already know, Mr. Chairman, but for different things, it granted and kind of put a cap on the amount of wilderness area, but it didn't in Washington County. But it didn't do so with only a few acres. We've got over a quarter of a million acres, I understand, of wilderness area in that lands bill. I think 254,000, but I could be slightly off on the number. Acres of wilderness area between the BLM and the Forest Service and the National Park Service that's in Washington County, that's a huge amount of land. Wilderness areas are not just, oh, it's cool, it's wilderness, because sometimes the public uses wilderness maybe a little more liberally than Congress designates it. Those are highly restricted. Kind of the definition is untrammelled by hand of man, right? So this is land that you really can't ever do anything else with. It's not multiple-use land. It's supposed to be pristine as though nobody's ever been there before, and which means you can kind of walk on it, kind of. And that's about the only thing you can do with it. We've got a lot of that already in our county, and it's already two-thirds owned by the federal government. And so while, Mr. Chairman, while I support private property rights, and I think this rancher, I would have preferred it to be sold to another rancher who wanted to use the land as productive for agriculture and for the historical uses of ranching in Washington County, that's not what he decided to do. He sold it to this group, and so I support private property rights. But to buy it and then transfer it into wilderness area, which generally typically has to be created by Congress, Congress sets wilderness, you don't just make wilderness because you want to. So I'm not entirely sure what their strategy is on that, but we, the county owns a road and maintains a road that goes right through the center of this land. It's an important access point for other lands. Sometimes these groups say, okay, well, great, the road kind of negates wilderness, but everything right up to the edge of the road is gonna be wilderness, and everything on that side of the road going that way is gonna be wilderness, and we'll just not count the road as wilderness, essentially meaning that you can't do anything on that land at all, other than drive on that one road. We have enough wilderness in Washington County. I adamantly oppose any more. And so with that, I move that we approve Resolution R-2025-3426, opposing the transfer of additional private land to the U.S. Bureau of Land Management specifically for the creation of or addition to more wilderness.
Motion's been made, and I'll second that motion. And I think Commissioners know you've done a really good job at articulating the problem. The 2009 Lands Bill supposedly settled the question of wilderness in our county. Frankly, I think we had some great Commissioners in, but I think they were wrong on how much wilderness we actually gave up. And in this particular case, designating it wilderness would restrict access. And it doesn't just restrict access to this land. This allows access into the other public land that's there. So the motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. And while you cough there, Mr. Chairman, I would just like the record to also reflect that the county has every intention of continuing to follow our resource management plan, which federal law says they have to cite and adhere to as well, and that we will continue to maintain and use that road. And I don't particularly care if they try and sell it, you know, give it into wilderness land, and we hope that our federal delegation will support us as well, since I think that has to go through them as well for approval, so...
This is the end of our agenda. At this time, we will stand adjourned.